Now called to order the October 16, 2017 meeting of New Caney Elementary School District trustees at 6:31 PM. Let the minutes show that according to Mr. President and Ms. Shipley being absent. Please rise to the invitation to be given by Mr. Turner and the next time the legislature will have to testify will be there by Mr. Turner.
Please bow. Father, we do thank you for this glorious day you've given us today. We ask that you keep your hand over as we go through this night and we make the decisions that will glorify you in all that we do. Keep your hand over our administration, our employees, and most importantly, our students as they continue to go through this year and do your prayer, Father.
Praise the heavens.
.............................................................................................
Okay, item two on the agenda is recognitions for King's Manor and New Caney Elementary. Start with Mr.
..................................................................................................................................................................... Okay, our outstanding fine arts student is Emma LeBlanc. Emma plays percussion in the band and is a fan of science fiction. She loves to read and hopes to attain a degree in aerospace engineering so that she can work for NASA when she grows up. All right, our outstanding cape student is Gloria Copion. Gloria is in the band and plays tenor saxophone. Come on, Gloria. She helps her dad run the I-45 diner on Settwood. She wants to go to Baylor or Rice to become a psychiatrist. Okay, and our Kever Crossing Middle School outstanding teacher is Chriskey Bowden. This is Bowden has taught at Kever Crossing for six years. She teaches eighth grade science and she has two students, two children of her own also attend KCMS. She does additional things for our school as well. She sets up our field trip for Johnson Space and who every year and she is our science department chair. And our outstanding paraprofessional is Katie Richards. Katie's a third-year special education aide. She is a favorite of her kids, of her students and teachers alike, is always on the job with a smile. Katie also recently finished her teaching certificate in social statistics. And finally, we have our outstanding child nutrition specialist, Rita Mester. Rita is a dedicated employee we can count on and is willing to assist as needed in any area. Rita is reliable and capable and we're very glad to have her at KCMS.
Somebody's got to be first.
New face of Mr. Holton.
You don't look like Mr. Holton.
I know, I'm so sorry and he's so sorry. He is so sorry. He is so sick, really, really sick. So, I am going to read it as recognitions and I'm just so pleased to be able to recognize these great folks from New Caney Middle School. So, in no particular order, let's start with the kids though, the students since while we're here. Let's start with our fine arts student, just like the poor Spartans back there. These Eagles are in training. Ms. Imogene Field. Imogene has been a great student. Come on, come on up, Imogene, in the New Caney Theater Arts Program both this year and last and we're proud to have her join our theater productions cast. In addition to committing herself in the classroom, she has committed to supporting her cast mates by working both on and off stage as an actress and technician this semester. Her attitude is always positive and her work ethic is exemplary. She is an exceptional example of what a fine arts student should be. Thank you, Imogene, and if I'm saying your name wrong, forgive me, for your hard work, your commitment to our program and for lending us your talents this year. Ms. Imogene Field. Second student. This will be our CTE student, Mr. Jonathan Castell. Hope I'm saying that right, Jonathan? Jonathan is exemplary student. He takes responsibility for his learning and is curious about his education in class. He is always on task. Nice. And enjoys this, ignores, not enjoys, sorry, ignores distractions. He works well with others and is shown to be a valuable team player in all facets of the classroom. He is not afraid to ask for help or help a fellow student whenever needed. Jonathan wants to be a NASCAR driver or mechanic when he grows up. Jonathan is well mannered with both teachers and students and he is destined to reach great heights if he continues on this path very much, Jonathan. Congrats. Okay, and our third student to recognize tonight is Ms. Angelina Obragon. Angelina has been an outstanding student athlete for us here at New Caney Middle. Angelina, like so many others, is a multi-sport athlete, but we feel she takes it a step further. Angelina is a standout on the volleyball team. She is also one of our top cross-country runners. She actually won her division in the Dayton Cross-Country Meet and led us to a team victory overall. Angelina takes it a step further and is trying her hand, what, at competitive boxing. Wow. We are extremely proud of her efforts both on and off the courts, fields, and rings. She represents us well and we are proud to give her some special recognition. We wish her and the rest of the team good luck as we compete in our final meet of the season against all of the schools in our league on Wednesday. Congratulations, Ms. Angelina Obragon. All right, working our way up the list, paraprofessional, Ms. Ying Wan. Saying that right too, Ms. Wan. She does so much in preparing to help with the students in which she works. She makes notes, reads books, and studies ahead for tests the students will be taking in order to effectively assist them. Ms. Wan gives every day on our campus her full attention and effort. Ms. Wan goes above and beyond for her sped students by walking them step through step through the curriculum. Not only does she help them, but she also works to help other students that need assistance. Mrs. Wan always gives her students 100% and she is the most pure display of true dedication. Thank you for that. All right, let's go to our custodian, Mr. Leon Munoz. Yes, Leon, has been to the district for four years with all four of those being at New Caney Middle. Leon is always available and willing to help whenever asked or needed. He always opens the building on time, picks up trash in the parking lot, and our favorite helps with furniture. Mr. Munoz is the epitome of the jack of all trades. He does anything and everything to make New Caney Middle the cleanest building in the district. No matter what is needed to be done, he always does it with a smile. Cannot beat that. Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Child nutrition, Courtney Allen. Courtney is amazing in all caps with like five exclamation marks, so she must be, come on up, Courtney. Courtney has been with New Caney ISD for almost three years now and has been at New Caney Middle also the entire time. She always shows up to work on time as a smile on her face and is always willing to go the extra mile to make sure the food looks and tastes great. She's a great asset to this campus because she always goes out of her way to help others when in need or if she finishes her work early. Courtney is an awesome employee, all caps again, Courtney, and we're excited to have her. Thank you very much, Ms. Courtney Allen. Okay, last but not least, our teacher, Mr. Alden Bellinfonte. Mr. Bellinfonte, come up. He always has a positive, caring attitude with the students and staff of New Caney Middle. He has a true love for teaching and exemplifies all that is great about New Caney ISD. He has such a positive attitude and greets all of his students with a smile. No matter what day it is, one of his favorite sayings is that, today is my favorite day. No matter what the circumstance, his positive attitude is infectious and we all need a dose of positivity. Mr. Bellinfonte always brings a fun atmosphere to the learning environment. He strives to engage his students and pushes them to excel in everything that they do. Congratulations, Mr. Alden Bellinfonte and all of you guys, the Eagles of New Caney Middle.
Systems of Texas. Good evening. If you haven't signed in, please, before you leave, at some point there's a sign-in sheet so that we can have proof that we did have a public meeting tonight and there's also handouts on what we're going to talk about today.
This is the public hearing that we received in 1617. It's based off of 1516 information. What the first rating is, is Texas Education Code directs the commissioner to develop a financial accountability system for public and charter schools. The Texas Administration Code defines what the system is and how it's to be applied to districts. New Caney ISD's first background, we have received for 15 consecutive years the highest possible first rating that a district can receive. Between years 2002 and 2003 until 201314, New Caney ISD received superior achievement rating. In 2014-15, the legislature changed the first framework and districts received scores of pass or fail and we received a passing score. In 2015-16 and 1617, the district received an A rating, which is superior. And please remember the data that I'm presenting tonight is based off of 1516 financial information, but it is for the 1617 rating that we received in the summer. There are 15 first rating indicators. Indicators one through five are considered critical indicators. If you receive a no on any one of these indicators, it's automatically an F rating, which is, they labeled as substandard achievement. New Caney ISD was able to answer yes on all five of these critical indicators. Indicators six through 15, the district can earn up to 10 points for each indicator. On indicators nine, 12, 13, 14, and 15, you either receive a zero or a 10. New Caney ISD received a 10 on all of those indicators. Indicators six, seven, eight, 10, and 11, you're awarded points two, four, six, eight, or 10 based on a mathematical breakdown. We received 10 points on all the indicators except for indicator number six and we received six points on that indicator. Last year we received four, so we are moving up. What that indicator is, is basically your cash on hand. In order to receive all 10 points, you have to have 90 days cash on hand with our mathematical breakdown. We have 64.43 days of cash on hand, so we've received six points. So, in summary, this year's rating is A for superior. We received 96,100 points. Also included in this, we're required to do a management review report and that is included in the handout that's on the table. I'm just going to go through that real quick, some disclosures that were required to discuss. One of them is the superintendent's contract and we either had to attach it to this or post it on the website. It is posted on the district's website. Reimbursements received by or paid on behalf of the superintendent and board members, this is for the period of 1516. Some of the things listed here are bills, lodging, transportation, any fuel expense, and then another category, which is your membership dues. For Superintendent Franklin, it was $9,852. For Harold, $2,00657. Moreau, $1,00470. Jaws, $1,000. Turner, $1,00671. Wright, $000. Shipley, $2,00372. Wooton, $1,00535. And Nixon, $1,00429. We're also required to tell you about any outside compensation that superintendent has received and has not received any. There were no gifts received by the executive officers or the board members that exceeded an economic value of $250 and also there were no transactions or business transactions between the school district or any of the board members for this time period. Are there any questions from the board with that line?
Out of four on the agenda is open forum. Didn't have anybody sign up. Out of five on the agenda is closed meeting. Board will not meet in closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 for the focus of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and Government Code 551.076 for deliberation regarding security devices or security objects. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board will convene its ultimate meeting. The time is 6:47. The board is closed meeting at 8:16 PM and will now recommence the running session. Item six on the agenda is reports of both the board members. Item seven on the agenda is secret agenda report.
Let's start out with Mr. Kyle LeBlanc, just going to talk about the plan of report. Actually, I'm here to tell you about the Astros Yankees.
Congratulations on the arrival.
Yes, yes, I have a week-old daughter as of today, so, third child, so, much less sleep than I got five years ago. But I'll try to keep it entertaining. That's correct. We've got a newborn photo session tomorrow that's going to be awesome. So, like I said, I'll try to keep them as entertaining as the Astros and Yankees tonight by talking about those three things that LAN has been hired to focus on as part of our project and those are the district design standards, the facility condition assessment, and long-range facilities plan. When I was in front of you a couple of months ago in September, we talked about the long-range facilities plan, but today we're going to focus on the district design standards and give you an overview of what those are. Then we'll talk about the facility condition assessment and the metrics that came out of our study. And then finally, we'll wrap things up with a little bit more discussion on the long-range facilities plan and talk about the plan going forward from now. So, right now, we're two-thirds of the way complete with the project. So, we've completed district design standards and we've completed the facility condition assessment. So, the bulk of our discussion tonight are going to be about those two items. And then, then we'll have one slide at the end where we'll talk about that long-range facilities plan. I want to highlight a few things about the district design standards and that would be the organization of that document that we produced and put together for the district and talk about how we developed those district design standards. And then finally, we'll talk about a few highlights out of those district design standards that, just to give you guys a brief overview of things. So, as far as the organization goes of these district design standards, it's a thick book. It's about 450 pages of content and material, but those are broken down into an executive summary, which highlights and talks about the district's student capacity, campus safety and security, technology, and general growth about the district. And that provides kind of an overview, a high-level overview of what the district design standards are intended to do. And then, the rest of the content of those district design standards breaks down, breaks down by grade level, elementary, middle school, and high school levels, where we talk specifically about space requirements and provide room data sheets on a room-by-room basis for how a school would be designed. And then finally, talking, have diagrams so that an architect can review these district design standards and put together the building. And that's really what it's all about. As far as the development and approach to our, to the district design standards, LAN sat down with the district with several key members of your curriculum and instruction personnel, the CTE staff, fine arts, athletics, and child nutrition. All of these folks, all of these, all of this leadership in your district had input into the district design standards. And so, over several sessions over this past summer and into the start of the school year, we met with these, with these personnel to get their input and guidance on what they felt they wanted a school to look like. And so, taking all those components and putting them into room data sheets and class size standards and adjacency diagrams were all, were all part of this document that we put together. Included in those meetings were discussions after facilities tours of Shadow Creek High School, Sterling Aviation High School, and Anthony Middle School, which are near, near school districts that were selected specifically to go tour because these are districts with schools in them that really have a, have a, an intent of how the district wants their schools to look like. So, we took, we took those meetings, we paired that together with the feedback that we were getting from, from leadership in those areas. And we also took the input about Shadow Creek High School and several of these other facilities and melded them together into a document that's, that's really going to provide a cookbook, so to speak, of how a school would be put together. So, I want to focus on a few highlights out of the, out of the district design standards and then we'll talk about kind of the overall purpose and how they will be used. So, from a safety and security standpoint, one of those highlights that are included in the design standards are crime prevention through environmental design. So, that, what that means is the way school, the way the classrooms and the way the hallways are oriented, it's intended to provide line of sight and specific areas where an administrator could go stand and monitor several locations and several areas from one standpoint makes it easier to prevent crime. Also, capacity was a, was a big thing that the administrators wanted to keep in mind. So, small class sizes such as, such as 22 students per classroom for prepaid through fourth, 25 students per classroom through, for fifth through eighth, and for ninth through 12th grade, 27 students per classroom. So, these are, these small class sizes lend to more involvement with the teacher and students, a better, a better student-to-staff, a student-to-teacher ratio. So, that was a highlight out of the design standards. Another piece that was highlighted in the design standards is technology. So, mobile devices for students in third through 12th grades was an emphasis. And then finally, academic programs and the way a school would be put together are designed around houses or pods, you might call them, where, where curriculum from the different disciplines of science and math are all kind of grouped together as kind of a house or pod where students would circulate in between their core curriculum and have CTE in close proximity. So, that's the intent of the design of a school in these district design standards. So, what does it, what does it all mean? What are the district design standards intended to do? They're really, they're really intended to be a toolkit for architects. So, the district design standards is not going to be a, here's a school, here's a high school, here's how it should be designed. The design standards are intended to be a cookbook to hand over to an architect and say, hey, I want to, I want to build a new high school or I want to build a new elementary school. They're going to take this, they're going to take the design standards document off the shelf and say, okay, well, I need this ingredient, this ingredient, and this ingredient for an elementary school and put these together to develop a set of plans and a set of standards for a particular school, whatever it might be. And so, the intent is to provide some uniformity and parity between schools and newly-designed schools throughout the district. So, that's the whole purpose and the focus of the district design standards. So, that next topic we're going to talk about tonight is the facility condition assessment, something very near and dear to my heart. It came up, I came up doing facility condition assessments and I absolutely enjoy doing them and talking about the metrics that come out of them. So, if I start to speed up, it's just because I'm excited. So, the facility condition assessment, as far as New Caney ISD goes, we cover 2.1 million square feet of your facility. So, that's not all of the facilities in your district. There are several facilities that were built after 2014 and those, as far as our scope of work, didn't make a cut in what we look at. So, there's several schools that we didn't go into, but in all, for our scope of work, we covered 44 buildings on 16 campuses. And those are the metrics that we'll talk about here in the following slides. So, as far as facility condition assessment basics and what the importance of the facility condition assessment is, is basically we'll, we'll take a building and break it down into its parts and provide a metric or a score and put each building on a level playing field. We'll talk more about those, those scores here in the next couple of slides. Also, want to educate you a little bit on the terminology and some of the data points we look at and we'll talk about the actual metrics that came out of this facility assessment. All of this was done, all of our facility condition assessment work was done with software. So, there's a software that we use specifically for facility condition assessments and I'll, and I'll touch briefly on that at the very end of the, of this set of slides. So, as far as terminology goes in a facility condition assessment, districts are, sorry, buildings are broken down into systems. There's a different type of flooring system, a roofing system, a structural system. These are the, this is what is meant when I say systems of a building. When we go and do a facility assessment, we'll try to identify, or we will identify all the requirements that might need to take place in a building in order to fix it. And then, with all that information, we come up with a facility replacement value in order to define and provide metrics for a facility condition index and a requirement index. These are the two scores that I'll talk here in a minute about. Some of those primary data points that we look for are the age of a building, the age of the systems in that building, and also the size of the building, the size of the systems in the building. One of the easiest ways to understand and comprehend the facility condition index and a requirement index is to think about a house, which is what I've got up here on the screen. So, when we develop a facility condition index, it's simply a score for a building on a relative playing field from building to building. And so, in the, in the denominator side, there's a value, a replacement value for a building, and then on the numerator side, there's a total amount of requirements. So, when we go and do a facility assessment, if you're thinking about a house, that might be valued at $100,000. And then we go and put on our facility condition assessment goggles and say, okay, I see some things that are wrong with that house. The air conditioning unit needs to be replaced, the foundation has some issues, we've got some cracks in the windows and that sort of thing. We'll identify those items, see here, and we'll divide, devise a value for those improvements that need to be made. So, there's the requirements in this example that are worth $15,000 and a division, dividing that by a value, a replacement value of a house of $100,000 means that the facility condition index or the FCI score of that building is a 15%. means that the facility condition index or the FCI score of that building is a 15%. So this building has a score of 15% in this example. So you might be wondering, okay, so if we're talking about a building that we're in right now, the FCI of this building would very well likely be zero. So there's really probably no requirements here in this building that need to be addressed here at this point in time. And we may, we got a little bit of roof problems. We're about 18. Well, this building, this building was not included in the assessment, so that's, that's my, that's my out on that knowledge. So you might be thinking about a building, a brand-new building has an FCI of 0%, so let's, I'll take that back just a little bit.
Theory, you're just rubbing a target.
Exactly. So you might be wondering to yourself, well, what does a, what does a FCI of 15% mean or 18% per this building? What does that mean from a subjective point of view? How do we put a subjective rating? How do we call this building, good, fair or poor? What you see here on the screen is a sliding scale. So down on the bottom of that bar is the FCI or the requirement index score. And on the top of that bar is that sliding scale. Really what, what every client that we have that does a facility condition assessment usually takes ownership of this, but this is kind of a go-by, so to speak. So from a 0 to 5%, a building would be considered to be in excellent condition. When you get up past that 40 to 50% mark, up into the 100% mark, that, that's a building that's in fair to poor condition. So kind of keep that in mind, keep that balance of what an FCI and an RI is versus what a, what a subjective rating might be for those types of buildings with those types of scores. And just to further define that RI, requirement index score, the facility condition index or the FCI score is your current condition. The requirement index is your anticipated condition. So it's five years in advance, what would I anticipate my score to be for these buildings? And so finally, we get to the, the real highlight here of, of our study and what, what it means to, or what the district's overall FCI and RI score is. So right now, for the facilities that we, that we assess, the FCI score is 8.7%, which if we go back to this slide right here, you're really in that good condition. So overall, the district for the buildings we assessed is in really good condition at an 8.7% FCI. The requirement index score at a 19.3% is that projected condition. So in five years, if we didn't address anything, if we didn't address any requirements at this point in time and just let our buildings and facilities age, our projected score would be a 19.3%. So that's what kind of a current condition is of 8.7 and a, and a future condition of 19.3 would show us for your facilities. To talk about also those facilities that we didn't include in the assessment would bring this FCI score down. So the, so all the buildings, Tavola, Woodridge, all the buildings that were not included in this assessment would effectively bring this number down. So in, in, overall, the, the district is, would be considered in really good condition. Another, another point, some metrics that you're seeing up there on the screen are the site, the FCI for the site and the requirement index for the site. Site was a, as an element of our scope of work, so we did a site condition assessment. And so we broke those apart just so you could see what the building's conditions were versus what the site's conditions were. That's from an overall site. So this next slide that we're showing up here on the screen.
So what's the difference between the facility and the site?
Just clear.
The land, the land area around.
Right, say five feet outside of the building's footprint. So, right, anything outside of the building's footprint would be included in the site condition index. And our scope of work for that was, was any site improvements that had to do with fencing, drainage and any kind of flat work like roads and parking and sort of. So what I'm showing here on the screen, and you're not really, it's not really intended to, to see each and every one of these words. I know the words are small, I see squinting up there. It's to show you the overall condition on a campus-by-campus basis of the district's facilities that we assess. So what I'm going to do here is lay over that subjective rating, that excellent to good to fair to poor condition rating. And you can see where, where some of these buildings, some of these campuses lie. And so the one in gray, that's.
Be careful down that one. Some great students went to this school.
That's, that's peeking at the top of the list.
Here, here people.
It's Porter Elementary School. So that's just the numbers. I, I don't have any kind of ties or subjective, subjective feelings about, about the buildings. But, but those are, those are what the numbers are showing. This is, I'll live or die by the numbers. So those are the facility condition indexes by campus. So you can see from a campus-by-campus basis how that shakes out and what the information is telling us for, for the total cost of the requirements divided by the replacement value of these campuses. So the next slide I'm going to show is what your, what your requirement index is going to show. So right now, we're looking at FCI, that's your current score. The next, the next table we're showing, the next chart we're showing here is your future projections. So you'll see how, how we went from a, from several peeking up in the, into the fair range to most of the schools peeking up, or most of the campuses peeking up into the fair to beyond fair or poor range. So that's, I'll let you digest that just a little bit.
So if the building's historic, the score can't come down? It's not looking good. Yeah, Porter is a historic building. Porter Elementary. Been there forever.
So, so your comment about it, about it being there forever might lend itself to, to this next slide that we want to show you and highlight. So those buildings that are part of your inventory, that were part of our scope of work, one of the things I love to do is play with numbers and see how things look and what the information tells us. What we're seeing here in this slide is telling us that a, that old buildings are a drag on, on your overall facility condition index score and how much of a drag they are. And so, so those, so there's five buildings in the inventory that are above 45 years old. And of those five buildings, that's 11% of the 44 that we assess. And of those five buildings, they account for 36% of the requirements that would be found at those, at those facilities. So the whole, the whole bar on the right-hand side is, is all of the requirements and the darker blue portion of that right-hand bar chart is the requirements that are attributable to just the five buildings. So 11% of your buildings constitute 30, 36% of the requirements cost identified as part of the assessment. So it's a telling slide.
How much of the 40% is just Porter Elementary? Because most of that probably happened while Chad was there, so.
I'd have to go back and look at those numbers. I could grab my binder right here and tell you. But that's a telling slide. So we, we'll, we'll have room for, for questions here at the end, but I'll, I'll wrap things up and talk about the software and also talk about the district, the long-range facility plan. So I mentioned earlier about the software that we use to, to develop these numbers and these scores to do the assessment. It's a software called VFA Facility. It's not tied to LAN, it's a third-party software. And the district is our owners of it. So this is an annual subscription type of software that the district now owns and, and I personally was in charge of doing training for the district. So Mr. Milling had a group of individuals here from the district that we conducted two days' worth of training for the software. And so the intent is that the district will maintain the software and be able to provide some of the same types of reporting that, or some of the same types of reports and verbalize some of those facility condition index scores and requirement index scores as you maintain your buildings, as the buildings age. And so the intent is for you to have an overall picture and an overall view and be able to do some capital planning with the software. So again, it's a third-party software, so when LAN is out of the picture, the software doesn't come with us. It stays. So I have a highlight there. The last thing I want to talk about tonight is the long-range facility plan. So last time we were here, we had, we held up this, we held up this monster sheet in front of you that has our, has the schedule for the way things will progress with the long-range facility plan. Mr. Turner, Mr. Trout, you guys are part of that long-range facilities plan. So on Thursday, it'll be the first meeting of eight that we sit with a group of community members and board members and, and staff that have been identified as part of the long-range facility planning committee to work through the information and the data that we have collected with the facility condition assessment and also talk about, so talk about the aging facilities and what we want to do from an overall standpoint, from a capital planning side of things. So we've moved through those, the first two-thirds of the project and then we're going to wrap things up here over the next several months leading up into January, February next year for what we're going to do from a capital planning side to address issues that might be needed for your current facilities as well as growth for the district. So that, that wraps up my outbound communication and we're certainly here, I'm certainly here to answer any questions that might have come up here as we talk about the conditions of facilities or the district's design standards or, or anything that we have planned over the next few months with the long-range facility.
Question.
Sir. All right. Thank you all very much.
Prior to our District of Innovation designation last spring, each year at this time, we would request a waiver with the state for all of our classes K through four who were above the 22 to 1 class size limit. This year, we are not required to file an exception or a waiver with them, but we do want to report to you that we have 17 classes right now that are above 22 to 1. So they can report it, break it down by campus. Four classes at Ben's Branch, two at Caney Elementary, five at Oakley, one at Sorders Mail and four at Allen Branch. Any questions?
That's a total, I mean, as far as like, what's the highest number out of the classroom?
24.
24?
And that should change tomorrow because it's already changed all of it since last week. So we drop, we'll drop some and then again, so we'll start pitching in about.
Thank you.
Okay, item on the agenda is consent counter consisting of consideration minutes, consideration financial boards, consideration portion reports, consideration personnel reports, considerations updates to local policy exhibits, DIA, FFH, FB and consideration update to policy FFA. Are there any questions? Motion to approve items on the consent counter. Mr. Miller, second, all is prepared to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item on the agenda is consideration of voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney ISB. Mr. Prentice. Our voluntary exit incentive agreement, we've got that set, the process will be January the 8th through March the 9th. We'll have that opportunity for employees to be a part of that incentive this year.
Has anything changed from the prior year? Anything?
Just, just the dates.
The dates.
Starting now, starting a little bit later than we did last year.
Compensation still claimed?
Yes. So right before the break starts. Any other questions? Is that motion to approve the voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney ISB? Motion to move to second, all is prepared to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of proof change proposal request number nine, R1 courtyard fountain in Dubai 2015, and add a 20.
Yes, sir, this change request, the, regarding the fountain area, this was originally part of the original design of the project and it was included as a future design element. So it's always been included in that. So as the project evolves, funds become available to put that back into the project. And so we're just asking here for approval now with those financials back there.
Any questions? So motion to approve the change proposal request number nine, R1 courtyard fountain in Dubai 2015, and add a 20.
So moved.
Motion to move to second, all is prepared to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of proof resolution authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn property, presented by Mr. Cap.
Yes, sir, this is a piece of property that we've spoken about previously about. It is seven acres north of our property on Sorders Road that we recently purchased. Mr. Fargo has gone through the process. We tried to go through with that. Obviously, that process has not worked out. So we're going to ask going to approve this resolution authorize us to do that. Once that's approved, Mickey Morris with Eric's group will be cemented into the board and we'll again go through that process. So we're just asking now to approve the resolution and not let it be updated.
Any questions? So motion to approve the resolution authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn property. Motion to move to second, all is prepared to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consideration of proof the purchase of land consists of approximately 12, 21.25 acres, more or less near the intersection of Highway 59 and the Husky Drive. We use a stadium parking or other school additional facilities and authorize a superintendent to negotiate a final sale and purchase agreement.
Yes, sir. Again, this is one of those pieces of property that we might not aware of, we've been discussing for a while. This is a piece of property directly, because that would be northeast of the state around here. It's potentially be used for additional parking and/or facilities for the district. I would just ask you to approve that, so we can set that.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of land consisting of approximately, is there any questions? Sorry. Jump ahead. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of land consisting approximately 21.25 acres, more or less near the intersection of Highway 59 and the Husky Drive? We use stadium parking or other school additional facilities and authorize superintendent to negotiate a final sale or purchase agreement. All is prepared to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved. Out of 13 on the agenda is consideration of approval of the district improvement plan goals and performance objectives.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Normally, this comes to the board in August or September, but because of the district's strategic plan and the new TDA strategic plan, the district leadership team had to meet and make sure that we were aligned to those two documents with our district improvement plan. And so we're bringing it to the board at this time for the consideration and approval of the district plan goals and performance objectives. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve the district improvement plan goals and performance objectives? All is prepared to say aye? All opposed? Motion is approved. Out of 14 on the gen, thank you, man. Out of 14 on the agenda is consideration of student employment contract.
Yes, sir, this is to amend and amend this contract for our conversations tonight. Mr. Nichols, we provide this a clean copy for you to sign and review.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's employment contract? All is prepared to say aye? All opposed? Motion is approved. Any more further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:47.